You just been done all the elections.
Well, my last week, that's what. That was scary.
A little man.
Clear sky.
Yeah.
It's sunrise.
Yeah, it looks like early in the night.
I like when it's.
Kind of rising at some point, usually.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually it's too late to see it.
I like when it's hurtling through.
Interstellar.
All right, we ready to go? Moving down? You two all right?
Yeah. We're having a good time all day.
I'm just a joke.
No.
Okay. We gonna go ahead and start?
Boycat in the meeting.
Oh, no. For Republican boycott. Ready? Good evening, Monday, March 25th, Common Council Meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Bishop Douglas Sparks of the Episcopal Diocese of Northern Indiana. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you. O Holy One, God of our forbearers, in your word you've given us a vision of that holy city to which nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, these elected members of the Common Council for the city of South Bend in the state of Indiana, the crossroads of America. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Grant to us honest and able leaders. Working together with them enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order. That all women and men from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Almighty God, send down upon these your servants the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their office to promote the well-being of all people, we pray, invoking you by the names we know you now and forever. Amen.
Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Preston, here. Councilmember McBride.
Present.
Councilmember Broden, here. Councilmember Teska.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Davis, this is Hugh. Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Furlet.
Here.
Vice President White.
Present.
President Scott.
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. Report on subcommittee amendments, please.
To the Common Council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 25th, 2019, meeting of the Common Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Unlike the Catholic Church, I want to please stand again. We're gonna do a moment of silence for the Christchurch New Zealand, and Bishop Sparks has another prayer for that, too. Thank you all.
Remembering our Muslim sisters, brothers, siblings who were killed on Friday the 15th of March in the land of the long white cloud, our Tirola in Maori and known to us as New Zealand, we pray. God of hope, we come to you in shock and grief and confusion of heart. Help us to find peace in the knowledge of your loving mercy for all your children and give us light to guide us out of this present darkness in the assurance of your love and mercy now and forever. Amen.
Thank you all. You may be seated.
It's a pleasure, sir.
Thank you. At this time, we do not have any reports from city offices. I see Laura Sullivan in the deep crowd in the back representing the mayor's office. Thank you, Laura, for coming. And Gennevi. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to rise and join the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Committee of the whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council meeting where the full council meets as a committee. During each ordinance, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak either in favor or opposition. Your comments will be limited to five minutes. With that, will the clerk please read Bill Number 719?
0719, Public Hearing on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for Budget Transfers from Various Departments Within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2019.
I would like to make a motion to hear Bill, Bills 0719, 08 and 09 together for purposes of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? No, we're all in favor.
All right. So am I reading 0819? No?
Yes, please do.
0819, Public Hearing on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Service Operations in 2019 of $25,000 from the General Fund 101, $3,469 operations in 2000... Hmm, okay, sorry. From the Student Baker Oliver Revitalization Grant Fund, Number 209, $672,857 from the Economic Development State Grant, Fund Number 210, $2,300,000 from the DCI Federal Grant, Fund Number 212, $200,000 from the Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund, Number 226, $160,000 from the Local Road and Street Fund, Number 251, $85,580 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center, Fund Number 279, $24,400, I mean, $24,945 from the Indiana River Rescue Fund, Number 291, $2,518 from the Kovaleski Bond Debt Service Reserve, Number 317, $251,475 from the County Option Income Tax Fund, Number 404, $32,500 from the Economic Development Income Tax, Number 408, and $671,000 from the Major Moves Construction Fund, Number 412, $5,117,411 from the 2018 TIP Parks Bond Capital Fund, Number 452, $500,000 from the 2017 Parks Bond Capital Fund, Number 471, and $415,500 from the 2015 Park Bonds Capital Fund, Number 751.
Would the clerk please read 0919?
0919, Public Hearing on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and Enterprise Operations in 2019 of $200,000 from the Consolidated Building Fund, Number 600, $1,715,669 from the Waterworks Debt Service Fund, Number 625, and a negative $600,000 from the Storm Sewer Fund, 667.
Is there a committee report on these three bills?
Yes, the Personnel and Finance Committee heard these three bills. They held a public hearing, and we sent these bills to you with a favorable recognition.
City Controller, Mr. Parker, are you making the presentation?
Yes. All right, thank you. Dan Parker, City Controller, offices up on the 12th floor of this building. Okay, so starting with Bill Number 0719, this is the budget transfer bill. If you turn to the details tab, these transfers do not increase or decrease appropriations. There's simply more money around so that we can better track where these expenditures are coming from. The largest one on there is for the Pecaken Band, the donation that we received for the Pecaken Band for the Hotler Park renovation or construction that's going on currently, and that's being moved so that we can segregate those monies and track how they're being spent for the purposes of reporting back to them. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, go ahead with the.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Bill 0819, uh, this is the additional appropriation request for civil city funds. So these are, uh, we done in the detail related to this bill, segregated it out into four buckets of additional appropriations requests. The first bucket is unanticipated expenses, so this is what you would expect additional appropriations requests to be, which are items that have come up since the development of the 2019 budget or were not known during the development of the 2019 budget. The second bucket is items that are supported by new revenue, and so these are primarily dollars that came in in the form of grants that we did not get in time to put them into the 2019 budget, so we're asking that the council approve those expenditures so that we can spend those grant dollars. The third bucket is capital projects, and so these are funds that were a part of a larger capital project that's already been approved by council. When we approve or when council approves capital projects, it's difficult to know whether the fund will be spent in 2018 or 2019, and so we tend to approve the full amount of the project, but invariably some of those funds aren't spent just in terms of timing of the construction, and so we're coming back to you to ask that there be made of the amount that was already approved in 2018 be approved in 2019 for additional spending. And then the last bucket is what I titled administrative items, which is somewhat similar to capital projects in that these are items that were appropriated in 2018 but were not spent, and so we're asking that these items be re-appropriated in 2019 so that we can complete the projects as appropriate. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have on these, or if you'd like me to go into more detail, I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay, just a moment before we move on. Are there any questions at this point? Councilmember Broden.
Thank you very much. Just actually a question and some comments. I like the clarity with which you've added to this report with the subsections. I think that's very helpful, not only for council but for members of the public. I am really excited about the three, over $3 million in the grant funding, and I'm wondering if council perhaps could have some identification of the individuals on staff who actually did that work, because I think, I mean, I specifically would like to thank them, and I think my council peers might feel the same way. This is, it's extraordinary to have this type of grant dollars coming into our city and then for, I think, some long, from projects that we've all spoken, you know, in favor of for a long time. So I would like to have a list, if at all possible, of things that's.
Absolutely, and we'll get to a full list, absolutely. I do know that these specific grants were spearheaded by Susanna Fritzberg in the mayor's office as well as working with Pam Meyer in DCI.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my last question, I'm sorry, you actually answered quite a few questions in committee, and just a reminder to the public that that is a portion of the public comment, or I'm sorry, of your presentation, is always to go through these in much detail and to take questions from council, so thank you very much for your efforts earlier today. One question, though outstanding, is the school zone flashing beacons, and I will be surprised that you know this, to this specificity, but could you follow up, please, on where those flashing beacons will be installed?
Yes, and I think you were correct, I do not know that, but yes, we will follow up.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a question so far? Then proceed with 0919.
Yes, so Bill 0919, so this is the, a similar bill to 0819 in that this is an additional appropriation request, but this is for the enterprise funds as opposed to civil city funds, again, broken out into these subsections. The only item in the unanticipated expenses subsection is $200,000 for cleanup of the former Drewery Brewery site. This will be augmented by $200,000 that will be going before the redevelopment commission on Thursday, $200,000 request that will go before the redevelopment commission for TIP money on Thursday, but this will be the city portion of the cleanup, and as we discussed in committee earlier, all expenses that the city incurred related to this cleanup will be added to the property tax bill for the property owner. The administrative items section is largely due to the debt service, debt service statements that were due on January 1st of 2019. These debt service statements were budgeted in 2018 but were not made until January 2nd of 2019, and so we do need the appropriation that was for 2018 to be moved into 2019 for those. And then the last part of that administrative items is actually a reduction of $600,000 in expenses in the storm sewer fund because that additional storm sewer revenue will not start until midway through the year, and so we're reducing the expenses in the projects appropriately. And one of the, the questions that came out of committee was what projects are still gonna be funded, and I do, I did see that there was an email that came out to the council in the meantime from Eric.
Okay, thank you. Any questions at this point? Okay, then we'll move to the public portion of this, of the review of these three bills. Any comments on any of the three bills speaking in favor? Anyone speaking opposed to these bills? Then each in turn, 0719. Motion to send the full council favorably. So move. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
0819. Motion to send forward favorably.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
0919. Motion to send forward favorably.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to, well, there's nothing to move on to. Motion to raise your hands up from the committee of the whole.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Full council's now back in session. Ms. Fowler, would you please give reading, third reading, to 0719?
0719, Third Reading on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for Budget Transfers from Various Departments Within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year of 2019.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyd?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Would you please give re, third reading to 0819?
0819, Third Reading on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and City Service Operations in 2019 of $25,000 from the General Fund 101, $3,469 from the Student Baker Oliver Revitalization Grant Fund, Number 209, $672,857 from the Economic Development State Grant, 210, $2,300,000 from DCI Federal Grant Fund, Number 212, $200,000 from the Liability Insurance Premium Reserve Fund, Number 226, $160,000 from the Local Road and Street Fund, 251, $85,580 from the IT Innovation 311 Call Center, Number 279, $24,945 from the Indiana River Rescue Fund, Number 291, $2,518 from the Kovaleski Bond Debt Service Reserve, Number 317, $251,475 from the County Option Income Tax, Number 404, $32,500 from the Economic Development Income Tax Fund, Number 408, $670,001 from the Major Moves Construction Fund, Number 412, $5,117,411 from the 2018 TIP Parks Bond Capital Fund, Number 452, $500,000 from the 2017 Parks Bond Capital Fund, Number 471, and $415,500 from the 2015 Parks Bond Capital Fund, Number 751.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyd?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. 0919, please.
0919, Third Read on An Ordnance of the Common Council of the city of South Bend, Indiana Appropriating Additional Funds for Certain Departmental and Enterprise Operations Fund in 2019 of $200,000 from the Consolidated Building Fund, Number 600, $1,712,669 from the Waterworks Debt Service Fund, Number 625, minus $600,000 from the Storm Sewer Fund, Number 667.
Motion for passage?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Broden?
Aye.
Councilmember Teska?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyd?
Aye.
Councilmember Furlet?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Preston?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you. Move to resolutions. Can I entertain a motion to send 1904 to continue it indefinitely?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just to clarify that, you know, the table leading said, is that the petition's ready for us?
Yes, it was. Thank you. Mr. Palmer. There are no first readings. We moved unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business? Seeing none. Any new business?
I would just like to make an announcement about the groundbreaking ceremony on Wednesday at Run Village Park. The VPA, they will be having a river cutting for, to start the installation of renovating the, all of the restaurants and all the parks for ADA compliance.
Awesome.
So 1:00 on Wednesday. And vice.
Thank you. Ms. Broden.
Yes, I think this is okay to announce, if not, but in our Public Safety Committee meeting today, we had an excellent update.
Yes.
The invitation was to just speak about whether amnesty, but additional information with regard to the polar vortex, the permanent supportive housing, and other homeless and chronic homelessness issues were presented by Pam Meyer, and thanks to the mayor's office for helping coordinate that. And those will be available as soon as the minutes are compiled for the public to, or they can email me.
Good meeting. Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll open up the privilege of the floor. This is where individuals can come and speak to the common council. You need to address us. You have three minutes. You cannot address anything that was on the agenda tonight. You need to state your name and address, and Mr. Furlet will give you a timer and he'll give you a 30-second warning, so, anyone? You're new, right?
Huh? I've never been here before. Sherwin-8038, 22 Ford Street. I brought some pictures for you. While I'm grateful that I was chosen last year for my sidewalk and curves to be fixed, the sidewalk's already cracking and so are the curves, and I don't know what can be done, and they didn't do the whole sidewalk, and I'm not sure why they didn't. There's also pictures to show that I'm in the middle of a very long block, and mine was the only one done, and it kind of looked, it sticks out like a sore thumb, and it looks silly when you just pick and choose one amongst the others, and I'm hoping that something can be done not only to fix what's already coming apart, because if it's already coming apart in six months, it's obviously not gonna last long, and I'm sure that's not what the city intends. Um, so I'll leave those.
Do you want to set that, give those to the clerk?
There's, do you want to set her to pass on to Erica, or do you want me to?
You could pass it on to Laura Sullivan, I'm sure.
Okay.
And we'll follow up, too.
Thank you. My next thing is this million-dollar boom box. Now, I know you guys are gonna say it's not a million dollars yet, but it will be there. I was there at the '17 budget when it was approved. It was supposed to be a $600,000 expenditure, motorhome slash vehicle. Erin was gonna talk to people and L. Card, five-year lease, and the next thing I, I granted 18, I didn't attend every budget hearing. I was playing with my grandbaby. Shame on me for picking family before budget, but now it's up to $660,000 coming out of North Carolina. That doesn't even include the trips, so transportation back and forth, the time that's been spent on this boom box and everything else. I don't know how it blew up out of from where it was to what it is now, but somebody needs to be held accountable for it, and, you know, questions need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Go get the veterans out of the way.
Sherwin-8038, 22 Ford Street. Mine's gonna be fairly short and simple. As I've been walking neighborhoods, I keep kind of getting one common complaint, and it's that vacant lots have turned into dumping grounds. Neighbors call code, and it gets cleaned up, and then it's a dumping ground again. And I don't, don't know why this continues to happen, given that we have a really nice hazardous waste program in South Bend where you can take these things and dump them. It's actually kind of forward-thinking. So I guess the challenge would be, how do we get that message out to people in the neighborhoods? You know, use, use our power to say, look, why dump an empty lot? Risk getting fined and make your neighborhood look worse, when you can just bring it right down here, free of charge, dump it, and everybody's better off. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Come on up. Thank you. State your name and address in.
Bill Strance from Bill's Body Shop, 1818 South Olive Street. I'm having a little problem with the city engineers and the Lawson-Fisher engineers. There's gonna be no parking when they get done redoing South Olive Street. The street's gonna be one lane each way. I've got a business out there. I've been out there for 55 years. When they get done, I won't have any parking in front of my business. I have very little parking, other than a fenced-in lot that's 50 foot wide on the side of my shop, and a 10-foot wide alley, not an alley but a driveway on the south side of my shop. I'm trying to get some kind of a parking, whether we move the gate back that's in the front up by the end of the building, move it back and make a parking lot on the side. I don't know what the city's recommendations are, if you need to have a paved parking lot or what. I've been talking to Welsh and Kelly, and they're, they're getting together with me to give me a price on paving. They're talking like around $19,000 to put a fence from the front to the back in the side lot, roughly about 40 or 50 feet back. They're just moving the front fence with the gate in it back in the side lot. That's gonna go back probably around 40 or 50 feet, but the price on the fence, I've called three fence companies this last week. One of them told me it'd be the middle of April before they'd even give up and give me a quote on it. A guy came out today, supposed to get back with me, but they're looking like probably around $5,000 to move that back. I also have a electric fence. I have a dog at the shop, and I have electric fence put in that's got a wire across the front so the dog can't go out the front door when we're working there. The overhead door is in the front of the shop, and we usually have that open to get air in there in the summertime. The guy quoted me a figure of roughly around $400 to $500, but he hasn't sent me a written proposal yet.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
So this is my problem. I gotta get, also, in the meantime, the Right-Away Jones from Fort Wayne comes up. They give me, now, this all started in January. I tried to get together with him in January. The city engineer couldn't make it out for the first appointment because he had, he had leg surgery or something, hip surgery, and he was afraid he might slip. Well, I don't know, but he, they canceled that appointment. They canceled another appointment. The guy from Fisher Lawson canceled the next appointment.
Your time is up.
I'll, I'll catch up to you right after this.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing our attention. Name and address, please.
Maggie McCoveyak, 51616 Clubhouse Drive.
Could you speak towards a little square thing?
Yes.
You're very quiet.
Not always. Thank you for giving us opportunity. I'm the principal of Corpus Christi Catholic Elementary School located two blocks from the proposed site of the Oxford House. Our school has been in this neighborhood for 58 years and has educated many city residents over those years. Our students range in age from 4 to 14 years old. Our primary concern with the location of Oxford House is one of safety for our school children, some of whom walk to school through the neighborhood, and all of which have outside recess on the school grounds adjacent to the neighborhood. While we are empathetic with the. While we are empathetic with the people who are battling various addictions and understand the overall goal of the program, we feel strongly that there are plenty of places within the city to locate a group home that are not in such close proximity to an elementary school. The location of the house presents significant personal risk to our school students, and on behalf of the school community, I feel I must object to the consideration of the group home in our neighborhood. The nature of addiction is that sometimes there are relapses, and if or when there are, it can also lead to dangerous behavior which poses an unacceptable risk for our student community comprised of very young children. We strongly urge the city leaders to find more appropriate location for the rehabilitation of residents who have addiction issues, not to mention the fact that there's Boland Park, which has a lot of activity in the summer, and the, the narrow streets, the car, the house right now has a one-car garage, and if you're going to put eight to 12 people in there, there is no room to park on the streets, which again is a safety issue with children darting in and out from cars, and just very concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Name and address, sir.
Typerugge, 18370 Dunn Road. So last month, there were two common council meetings regarding the possibility of a climate recovery resolution or ordinance, and recognizing that not all council members were present. I simply wanted to stress again the importance of taking legislative action regarding climate change in regarding to preparing for it and mitigating it, but also adapting to the outcomes that will come if we don't prevent climate change. I work at the Robinson Learning Center, and I've worked with a bunch of 10, 12-year-old kids who homes have flooded multiple times in the past couple of years through the historic flooding in South Bend, and I'm concerned that if definitive action isn't taken soon, those kids are going to grow up in a South Bend where that flooding is very common, even though they really had nothing to do with the fact, they really didn't cause climate change being 10 years old right now. So I simply wanted to ask for the speedy consideration of a climate recovery resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody. Wow, good work.
Street cleaners are out.
That's it?
Oh.
No, well, you can see in my pictures.
Yeah, I swear, yeah. That's good. We have done this before, yeah.
I don't know, I can't remember.
Because it should be online, too, because, you know, try. Okay, that's good. Wish everyone luck with our meeting today. Beautiful day. Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm coming.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'd sit out all day.
We still have to...
More questions?
Have we got, or do you have to do a check?
More questioning of the speeding. He's been here for as many years as he's...
Oh, yeah. Come ask me. Okay. Mm-hmm. Yes.
That's right, he started to speed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, yeah. Look, so you, school, um...
Sorry? Scott, Dave.
Thank you, appreciate it. I've already got your question over there.
Thank you.
Maybe she'll follow up with you.
Huh?
She's going to, she's going to press a question.
I can share, and I'm more curious about a little...
Hi, Ben. You might not remember, but the next committee meeting is because of IDU stuff, I'll be here at seven.
Okay. No problem.
I'm good, I'm good, thank you.